Today is, good evening everybody. Today is May 16th. The time is 6:02. We've established a quorum. This regular board meeting for the Socorro Board of Trustees will come to order. Tonight, one of our outstanding seniors from Socorro High School's legacy barber shop will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Omar De La Torre is one of Socorro ISD's top students. During his sophomore year at Socorro High School, Omar seized the opportunity to apply to the district's new barbering program. Two years later, Omar is on track to graduate in the top 10% of his senior class next month. He is also one of Legacy Barber Shop's first two licensed barbers after passing the Texas Barber State Board exam on his first try this April. In addition, Omar and nine other barber students will be the first to graduate from the barbering program in June. Since April, Omar has been working professionally as a fully licensed barber. He plans to attend El Paso Community College after high school and then enroll at UTEP to study business management. His goal is to open his own barber shop someday. Good luck, Omar. Please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's give Omar another round of applause, please. Continuing with tonight's agenda, we'll go to Superintendent's comments. Dr. Carmen.
Sir. Good evening, President Naheda, members of the board, and also to our Socorro ISD community. I would like to begin by wishing Board Secretary Paul Gueda an early happy birthday. Mr. Gueda's birthday is on May 23rd. Happy birthday. I would also like to welcome not only our newest board members, but also our new board officers. Congratulations and welcome to Ms. Maribel Macias, District at Large, and Ms. Alice Cardea, District One. Also, congratulations to incumbent Mr. Michael Naheda, District at Large. And congratulations to our newly elected officers. We have Mr. Michael Naheda, Board President, Ms. Cynthia Naheda, Board Vice President, and Mr. Paul Gueda, Board Secretary. I'd also like to welcome Ms. Erica Luna as the new Assistant Principal of Horizon Heights Elementary. I'd like to thank everyone who attended our Teacher of the Year Gala on May 5th at the Convention Center. It was a beautiful, fun evening, and I was honored to congratulate our 49 Campus Teachers of the Year. Congratulations again to our two top winners. SISD Elementary Teacher of the Year, Arlene Parada, from Lujan Chavez Elementary School, and SISD Secondary Teacher of the Year, Philip Chase, from Manuel R. Puentez Middle School. Congratulations. Our online registration for new students to Socorro ISD is now open for the 2023-2024 school year. This information can be found on the district's website. Upcoming events. Our Instructional Aid Job Fair will be here in the DSC in this boardroom tomorrow, May 17th, from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. We have our State of the District address on May 23rd at 5:00 p.m. at Socorro High School, where I will have the opportunity to deliver an update of the last year in SISD and the great progress we have made to take SISD on a path to further innovation and future success. I'm looking forward to this great event to update our SISD community. Our Socorro ISD Summer Meal Service will begin on June 5th. This program will be ongoing through June 30th. This is a wonderful program through our Child Nutrition Services that provides free meals to all children ages 18 and under from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. This information can be found on the district's website. I'd like to thank our CNS Department for always going above and beyond for the sake of our students and community. Thank you. Two other upcoming events. The event we eagerly anticipated all year long is coming up, graduations. They will be celebrated June 9th and 10th at the Don Haskins Center at UTEP. I'm excited to congratulate our class of 2023. An extraordinary thing I'm happy to report about this year's graduating class is that we have 451 SISD graduating seniors who have already earned their associate degree. degree. This is an awesome testament to the outstanding early college programs and dual credit opportunities we provide in Team SISD. I hope to see lots of proud parents and families there to cheer on the graduates. Finally, I want to announce the SISD district will be closed for Memorial Day on May 29th. And on that good note, this concludes my comments.
Thank you, Dr. Carmen. Moving on, we'll continue with item number four, Board Honors. Mr. Escobar.
Good evening, President Naheda, members of the board, and Superintendent Dr. Carmen. My name is Daniel Escobar, Chief Communications Officer for the district, and it is my pleasure to introduce tonight's recognitions. If you'll please step down to receive our honorees. First, we will recognize a student who won the Read 180 National Award. This award is dedicated to honoring students who have shown exceptional improvement in reading. This student was one of 13 students who earned this award nationwide. Congratulations to Eduardo Gonzalez Mendez from Specialist Rafael Enando III Middle School, and his teacher is Brenda Rios. Just a quick note that the photos taken by our district photographer, Mr. Largo, are going to be posted on our district website. There's a camera icon on the bottom right-hand corner that'll take you to Smugbug, and the photos are available for a free, high-resolution download. Congratulations once again. Next, we recognize students who won the El Paso International Museum of Art Tom Lee Art Competition. Students created artwork based on the exhibit "Small Man in a Vast and Wondrous World." Winning students earned cash prizes and had their work displayed in the International Museum of Arts Turner Youth Gallery. Congratulations to these outstanding artists. From Socorro High School, Jesus Buanda. Liliana Ressa. And their teacher, Lourdes Aguilar. If we can have you back to the front for a photo, please? Parents as well, you are welcome to come up and take photos as well. Keep smiling, looking straight ahead. Next, we recognize four students who were named to the All-State One Act Play Honor Crew. These students were selected from statewide applications. They served as part of the One Act Play Crew at the All-State Competition earlier this month. Congratulations to these outstanding students. From America's High School, Azul Saragosa. Ariana Garcia. Teachers are Emil Chaparro. And Thomas Haas. From Montwood High School, Daniela Melissa Galloso. Elizabeth Acosta. Their teachers are Rosa Gutierrez. And Xavier Alonso Felix. If we can have you back to the front for a photo? Please. Congratulations once again. Our next recognition honors a high school journalism group who won the National Scholastic Press Association Pacemaker Award. This campus is one of only 19 schools nationwide to receive this elite award, and it is the third time they have earned the honor. The NSPA Pacemaker Award is the highest honor in scholastic journalism and recognizes journalism groups for their superior writing, photography, design, organization, and coverage for the yearbook. Congratulations to the Eldorado High School Journalism Team. Diego Cruz Castuita. José Luis Herrera Macias. Brendan Malacara. Yolani Martinez. Kiana Sanchez. Gabriel Valmoria. Kayla Villanueva. And their teacher, Vanessa Martinez. Next, we recognize a middle school and two elementary school Student Councils for earning the Middle Level Texas Association of Student Council's Outstanding Student Council and Sweepstakes Awards. These student councils are among only five student councils in the El Paso area who were honored with this award. The two elementary groups are among only five elementary schools in the state to earn the award. Congratulations to these amazing student councils. From Dr. Sue Ashuk, Yaslin Acosta. Annabelle Bustamante. Demi Calvo. Jimena Castro. Meredith Cereceres. Emma Thadario. Ricardo Duarte. Sofia Duarte. Nobali Duran. Scarlett Felix. Abigail Garcia. Marisol Guerrero. Mariah Gutierrez. Lea Hermosillo. Ariel Hernandez. Valentina Lujan. Emma Martinez. Ariel Muñoz. Madison Patty. Melanie Piñera. Lucas Quinn. Hazel Quiñones. Sebastian Rodríguez. Melanie de Santiago. Gerardo Zoria Rodríguez. Mabel Soto. Aliana Soto. Catele Telas. Ariana Vázquez. Anaya Villarreal. And their sponsor, Christina Duarte. If we can have you all back to the front for a photo, please? Yeah, everybody look, don't look at your mom and dad for a little bit. Look right here at Acavious, okay? Look, big smiles looking at Acavious. Keep smiling, keep smiling. Look, dead center, dead center now. Hold those smiles. You might be sore, but it'll be okay. Keep smiling, keep smiling. Hold them up. Congratulations once again. Okay, we will continue with the Student Council from Helen Ball Elementary School. Abigail Alcantar. Madeline Ariola. Haley Coca. Luke Hernandez. Archer Lindstrom. Sofia Lizaraga. Jude López. Samantha Lujan. Sofia Navarro. Jessica Ramírez. Claire Sanchez. Caitlin Shuler. Lily Sedna. Jordan Valdez. And their StuCo sponsor is Alexandra Castillo. You can jump in front of them, they'll be okay. All right, certificate's up. There you go, big smiles, looking right at Mr. Largo. Keep smiling, keep smiling, looking right at the center. All right, congratulations once again. We continue with the Student Council from William D. Slider Middle School. Ava Bajesteros. Ryan Cervantes. Analisa Delgado. Jonah Gonzalez. Ari Hernandez. Jordan Lujan. Paulina Puentes. Viviana Robles. Allison Sanchez. Alexa Varela. Josiah Vázquez. Shanaya Watts. Alani Zubia. And their sponsor is Vivian Blanco. All right, if you all can please come back to the front for a photo. Kristy, the front row that way a little bit?
Next, we recognize a middle school and two elementary school student councils for earning the Middle Level Texas Association of Student Council's Outstanding Student Council and Sweepstakes Awards. These student councils are among only five student councils in the El Paso area who were honored with this award. The two elementary groups are among only five elementary schools in the state to earn the award. Congratulations to these amazing student councils. From Dr. Sue A. Shook, Yaslin Acosta, Annabelle Bustamante, Demi Calvo, Jimena Castro, Meredith Cereceres, Emma Thadario, Ricardo Duarte, Sofia Duarte, Nobali Duran, Scarlett Felix, Abigail Garcia, Marisol Guerrero, Mariah Gutierrez, Lea Hermosillo, Ariel Hernandez, Valentina Lujan, Emma Martinez, Ariel Muñoz, Madison Patti, Melanie Piñera, Lucas Quinn, Hazel Quiñones, Sebastian Rodríguez, Melanie de Santiago, Gerardo Zoria Rodríguez, Mabel Soto, Aliana Soto, Catele Telas, Ariana Vázquez, Anaya Villarreal, and their sponsor Christina Duarte. If we can have you all back to the front for a photo, please? Yeah, everybody, look, don't look at your mom and dad for a little bit. Look right here at Acavious, okay? Look, big smiles looking at Acavious. Keep smiling, keep smiling. Look dead center, dead center now. Hold those smiles. You might be sore, but it'll be okay. Keep smiling, keep smiling. Hold them up. Congratulations once again. Okay, we will continue with the student council from Helen Ball Elementary School. Abigail Alcantar, Madeline Ariola, Haley Coca, Luke Hernandez, Archer Lindstrom, Sofia Lizaraga, Jude López, Samantha Lujan, Sofia Navarro, Jessica Ramírez, Claire Sanchez, Caitlin Schuler, Lily Sedna, Jordan Valdez, and their Stuco sponsor is Alexandra Castillo. You can jump in front of them, they'll be okay. All right, certificate's up. There you go, big smiles, looking right at Mr. Largo. Keep smiling, keep smiling, looking right at the center. All right, congratulations once again. We continue with the student council from William D. Slider Middle School. Eva Bajesteros, Ryan Cervantes, Analisa Delgado, Jonah González, Ari Hernandez, Jordan Lujan, Paulina Puentes, Viviana Robles, Allison Sanchez, Alexa Varela, Josiah Vázquez, Shanaya Watts, Alani Zubia, and their sponsor is Vivian Blanco. All right, if you all can please come back to the front for a photo. Kristin, the front row that way a little bit? Keep smiling, looking right ahead. Congratulations once again. Our next recognition is for four SISD High School student councils for earning the National Gold Council of Excellence from the National Student Council. This honor recognizes student councils for their efforts to improve their schools and communities through their leadership and service. They have demonstrated strong leadership skills, function in an ethical and responsible way, and engage in spirit, civic, and service activities. Congratulations to these distinguished student councils. We'll begin with Eldorado High School. Aliana Acuna, Bianca Corona, Joel García, Itzel Guerrero, Polet Macías, Kayla Medford, Marcos Riperto, Lauren Riperto, Daniela Torres, Brendan Malacara, and their Student Activities Director Jacob Ramírez. If we can have you back to the front for a photo, please? Congratulations once again. We'll continue with Mission Early College High School. Anna Núñez, Cassandra Stevens, and Student Activities Director Drew Duggan. If we can have you back to the front for a photo, please? Congratulations. Next, Montwood High School. Isabel DeBaca, Rosa Caballero, Tiffany Gavaldón, Isabella González, Toni Marie González, Genesis Crageda, Miranda Morales, Viviana Muñiz, Daniela Ramos, Kiran Saucedo, Capri Serano, Nirvana Vargas, and their Student Activities Director is Anna Blair. Keep smiling, keep smiling. Congratulations again. Next, student council from Pebble Hills High School. Isabel Cedillo, excuse me. Rebecca Macías, Josiah Nasi, Arabella Tovar, Sara Villalobos, and their Student Activities Director is James Brown. Congratulations once again. Our next recognition will honor SISD middle and high school students for advancing to and competing at the 2023 Texas Science and Engineering Fair. Nearly 60 students advanced to the state competition. Two SISD eighth graders placed at the state fair. Joaquin Quiroñ from Socorro Middle School placed third in the junior division category of computational biology and bioinformatics. Absolutely. Round of applause. It's hard to say. And Diego Diaz from John Druigan School earned third place in the Materials Science Junior Division category. Congratulations to all of our outstanding science fair winners. We will recognize them by school level, beginning with middle school. From Captain Walter E. Clark Middle School Eduardo Duran and Edgar Romero. From Enzer Middle School Arturo Fong, Ethan Goveya, Cassandra Huerta Becerra, Malachi Valenzuela, from Desert Wind School Nathan Veliz, from John Druigan School Hope Canonizado, Diego Diaz, Kristen Embocuere, Viene Valtiera, from Puentes Middle School Alejandro Fernández, Ian Flores, from Sunridge Middle School Aubrey Cameron, Samaria Cologne, from Slider Middle School Zoe Ornelas, and Viene Ramírez. If you'll please come back to the front for a photo? Big smiles, big smiles. Just keep looking straight ahead. Almost there, almost there. Keep smiling. Congratulations once again. The Texas Science and Engineering Fair High School Students. From America's High School Jose Alcala, Al Paris Avitia, Jayla Kaminsky, from Eldorado High School Zoe Brooks, Ryan Minor, Nicia Winham, from Mission Early College High School Nicole Fonseca, Paulina Hernandez, Alexa Martinez, Chelsea Embocuere, Pamela Piña, Jennifer Ramírez, Diego Cifuentes, Vienna Smith, Jerry Lee Talamantes, Jaden Ruiz also from Mission Early College, from Montwood High School Aubrey Gavaldón, Daniela Rubio, Toni González, Erin Mendez, and Annabelle Villarreal. All right, if we can have you all back to the front for a photo, please? Congratulations once again. For our special presentation, we honor four school counseling programs that were recognized by the American School Counselor Association as a recognized ASCA/ACSA model program or RAMP. The prestigious honor is given based on their commitment to delivering school counseling programs aligned with the ASCA national model framework. The four schools are among only 100 schools nationwide that were selected for this recognition. In addition, Clark Middle School was one of eight schools in the nation named a RAMP School of Distinction. Congratulations to the four of these dedicated counseling teams. They are from Captain Walter E. Clark Middle School Christina Núñez, Rachel Peña, from Jane A. Hambrik School Yvette Harper, and Angie López, from James P. Butler Elementary Mandy Martinez, and Angie Torres, and from Carrasco Elementary Adriana Escobedo, and Patsy Carrio. If we can have you back to the front for one last If we can have you back to the front for one last photo for the evening. Congratulations once again. And that concludes our recognitions for this evening. Thank you. Now it's got a scent. No? I like that. Where is it? Okay, we'll go ahead and proceed to open forum. The Board encourages comments from members of the public. However, the primary purpose of this meeting is to conduct district business. Therefore, to ensure the efficient conduct of this meeting, all speakers must comply with the following rules. Address the Board at all times. Only persons who have timely signed up to speak will be called to speak. Comments should pertain to district issues or business. In accordance with Board policy, respect the rights of others, display civility and decorum, and refrain from using harmful and offensive content such as defamatory, obscene, or fighting words or gestures. Complaints will be referred to a grievance policy. Do not engage in conduct that disrupts or delays this meeting. Each speaker is legally responsible for the content and consequences of his or her own statements. In order to have enough time to complete all items on the agenda, each speaker will be given three minutes, and if a person speaks on multiple agenda items, not more than a total of five. All speakers, including those signed up to speak on agenda items, will be called to speak during open forum. The Presiding Officer will take all necessary measures to ensure that order and decorum is preserved during the meeting. We expect all persons to promptly comply with the Presiding Officer's directives. By law, the Board cannot discuss or act on any item which is not posted on the agenda. Thank you for your cooperation. Now let's proceed to open forum. We have two speakers signed up. The first one is Ms. Rosie Perez. Would you like to speak now or wait until the agenda item? It's up to you, now or on the agenda item. Okay, sounds good. So that is prior to Agenda Item 11A. All right, and then one other speaker, Mr. Carillo, you are also signed up to speak twice. Would you like to speak now or on the agenda item? Sir, one time, please. Five minutes. Now or at the agenda item?
Both. I think we've had this question in the past. It's a total of five minutes, three and two, however, I want to go ahead and address myself. I ask respectfully that you honor the...
Let me just, I offered Ms. Rosie the same choice. I want to be consistent. I said one time, either at open forum or for the agenda item.
Yes, sir, the Presiding Officer, you can set whatever decorum you want to set or rules. I think the rule that you read was that they would speak during open forum.
Okay. So, Mr. Carillo, both items at open forum for five minutes?
Actually, no. I would, what you read was said if we speak during open forum, we'll not be addressed. That's why I do not want to talk about agenda.
Well, it's on the agenda. We'll address it anyways. For the agenda item.
Okay, I'll speak for five minutes. I will argue about that here.
So you're going to wait till the agenda item?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Continuing then with item number seven, District Reports. 7A, District Intruder Detection Audit Report Findings, Mr. Nun.
Good evening, Dr. Carmen and Board of Trustees. The top priority of the Socorro Independent School District and the state of Texas is keeping students and staff safe every day. The Texas School Safety Center recently conducted an intruder detection audit at one or more of our campuses. The audits test whether a campus is accessible to an unauthorized individual. This audit, conducted as part of Governor Abbott's School Safety Directives for all school systems following the tragedy in Uvalde, seeks to help districts identify how campuses can improve safety for students, such as ensuring exterior doors are locked. The audit provides us with an opportunity to create a safer learning environment for our students and staff. We are working closely with our district's School Safety and Security Committee to ensure that we are training all our staff and securing our doors for the protection of everyone at our campuses. The support from the state in conducting the intruder detection audits is just one of many actions we are taking to ensure our schools are safe. We know that this work does not end, and we appreciate the Board's support. We acknowledge that parents and community members are likely very interested in the details of the audit results. However, it is in the best interest of the students that we do not share this information to the broader public, as it could lead to compromising important campus security information. Specific details of the intruder detection audit will be discussed at an executive session and with the School Safety and Security Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nun. Continuing with item 7B, Facilities Report. Ms. Fierro.
Good evening, President, Mr. Najara, Board Members, Dr. Carmen, Liliana Fierro, Director of Vocations and Construction. I'm here to present an update on our 2017 bond projects. The first slide shows the summary of our 17 projects. As you can see, the items on blue, SAC 2, New Combo, and Socorro High School Reconstruction, it's ongoing, and I will give you more details on the status. For maintenance and facilities building, that project is under design phase. And Eldorado High School, the punch list and close-up documents are ongoing. For items 6 through 17, those projects are already completed, and the final payment has been approved by the Board. Starting with Socorro High School Reconstruction, as you know, we have BLK Hassan Architects and Contractor BTC. Right now, the percentage of construction completion is 88%, and the construction contract Right now, the status of this project, we have Phase 3 ongoing. And here's some pictures of this status. First picture is the new practice field area, and the second shows a fire lane access route. Next, you'll see the pounding area showing a portion of the new wrought iron fence that's, it's already installed. The other picture shows the demo of the existing drives. As of today, the sidewalks are already completed, 100%. Do you have any questions for Socorro High School? Okay. Moving on to SAC 2. Again, the architect, HKN's architects and contractor, Baines General Contractors. This project is at the 47% completion. The construction contract value, 58,959,500. Right now, the status of this project, as you see on the slide, the area highlighted in blue and green are already completed and are being occupied. We have the pink area ongoing as our construction. Here's some updates on the project. They're almost finalizing the area on the south, parking lot, discus, and shut put area. The side view, you can see, I think it's, you, if you remember the last pictures I show, you can see a very great progress. The last picture, it's the ball side view. Here's more pictures on the Bob Hope entrance view, the locker rooms, fine arts building, and the home site and press box. You have any questions on SAC 2? Okay. Moving on to New Combo School, Architect Mijares Mora, Contractor Baines General Contractor. This project is at 98% completion. And right now, as I mentioned to you, Middle, the Islake Middle School and the 11 classrooms at the elementary school side are going to be completed by the next fiscal year. Here are some pictures of the alternate one that is part of the Ben Arvuth, Correl Ben Arvuth Elementary School. A corridor, a typical classroom, the hub area, another view of the typical classroom. Do you have any questions?
Do you anticipate a date of completion when administration and teachers will be able to take possession, basically?
It will be, our plan is to have everyone onboard on the campus, and you're talking about Islake Middle School, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so yes, at least they need to be on the campus two weeks before we open the school.
Two weeks before, and that's with furniture and everything?
Yes, ma'am, and right now, the installation of the furniture, it's ongoing, IT is finalizing connections as well, so we will be ready, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Questions? Thank you, Ms. Fierro.
Thank you.
Moving on with the Courtney Investment Report, Mr. Vargas.
Good evening, President Najara, Dr. Carmen, Members of the Board. My name is René Vargas. I'm Director of Business Services, and I'll be reporting the third quarter investment report. As you can see, as in prior quarters, we're reporting you in our different categories. Just to remind you, we have six different categories, along with the six different investor advisors that we have. In this first category, we have the operating fund investment, and as you can see in the far left, starting far left, we have the buy and maturity day. That's just merely the beginning and ending of that period. Then followed by the next four columns, you'll see book value and market value. Again, just, it's only one category that varies from the market to what the book value is, and that's our LSIP Advisors. As you can see, there's a slight variance in that one. Starting up with this one, we started off with a book value of 156.1 million, and we ended up with 175.4 for this quarter. As you can see on the book value, there's slight variance for that one that has a different amount for the market value. For this category, we did earn over $2 million, 2,020,223. So as you can see, the grass is getting greener as we go by with interest rates. The next category, we have the Health Insurance Fund Investment, and on this one, we do have a consistent 3.4 million, and all we do is later earn that interest, and we maintain it at this time. So it ends up with 3,481. On this category, we earned 37,923 in interest. The next category is our Workman's Comp Fund. On this one, again, like the one before, it's just, it's sitting there, and we just let it earn this interest. So we started up with 418,116, ended up with 422,811, which is just that addition of that 4650 that you see as earned. The next one is our Interest and Sync Fund. This is again our debt, that we pay our debt. We started off with 63.7 million, ended up with 76.3 million for this period. On this one, we earned a total of 1.1 million. And if you notice, there's the second to the last, you'll see zeros, and then you suddenly see a 25. It's just merely because we have investments, and we're still trying to keep that diversification. So we move money, as soon as we earn that, we transfer money from other funds into there, and that's what that 25 million is. Following that, we have our Construction Fund Investments. This is a category that we, and looks, as you can see, we have pretty, quite a number of them, because we separate each project that we have every year. So for, to give you an example, the first, the first group that you see, that LSIP, those are projects that range from, they're all from Bond 2017, but we separate them by construction, whether we did it in 2018, 2017, 2019, and so forth. So on this one, you'll notice that the second row, it goes from 46 to zero. That's merely because we're completing with that project, so we are closing out that account once we feel comfortable that, well, nothing else is going to go in there, so we might as well just remove it. You'll see another one that has zeros all the way across. We, that's construction from 2019, and all projects have been completed, so we are going to closing out that account. Same with the last four. It's the same category, it's just different years. It ranges from 2018 to 2020 construction. Altogether, for construction funds, we started with 63 million, ended up with 49.9. I guess we're paying and paying on all completed projects. And on this particular one, we made 674,780 in interest. And our last category is our Food Service Investments. This is another one that we just let it roll, and on this one, we started with 408,475, ended up with 413,236, which is again just that addition of that 4761. Altogether, as you can see for this quarter, we made 3,923,147. But the good news is, for year-to-date, we've made 6,482,53. So it's increasing as we go by. I did check the rate, what it was today, and right now, it's at what we call 506 basis points, which is one hundredth of 1%. So it's, it's like saying it's 5.06%. Again, we have a summary for you at the end, where you can see, altogether, we started with a book value of 287.2 million and ended up with 306.1 million. Same with the market values. We started with 287.2 and ended up with 306.1. As it calls for the Public Funds Investment Act, 2256, we constantly have to be verifying the ratings. It's just a requirement that we, and we take it extremely serious. So as you can see, each month, we do verify, and you can see the AAAM ratings, which is what it calls for this particular investment on the money market. We make sure that we do verify it with each and every month that we're investing it with them. As you can see, each category, we do check each category, again, going from Texpool to First Public, in this case, now it's Texas Range. These again are all our investment advisors, and we do check each and every one of them. And on the last page, as you can see, we do sign off on it. We have more than one individual verifying the verification from the other one. So again, we're very strict in this. It's a very important step in our investments, that we always want to be protected in this perspective. Are there any questions I may answer?
Questions? Thank you, Mr. Vargas.
Thank you.
Continuing with item D, Report on Student Information System Implementation. Miss Ramos. Continuing with item D, Report on Student Information System Implementation, Miss Ramos.
Good evening, Board President Nahara, members of the board, Dr. Carmen, Alice Ramos, Chief Technology Officer, and I'm here this evening to provide you with a brief summary update on the progress we've made with the student information system implementation. As you may recall, in the fall of last year, the district solicited a replacement for our current student information system, and that was in response to notification from our current provider that it was going to be end of life at this year. So we had an evaluation committee that we put together, and we provided a recommendation which was approved by the board in February of this year. Since then, the district has made some efforts, or taken some strides as we moved toward implementation toward, for the start of the school year. From February to July, our targets are to ensure that their data is migrated from the current system into the new system. We also have a lot of setup that needs to be done, so that the workflows will flow, the information flows appropriately, and the campuses can have the access that they need. In June, we are targeting the bulk of our training, and the first, we have two initial migrations, the first one will occur this Friday, and then the second real migration will occur at the end of June into the first week of July. We strategically selected that week because we know the district will be closed, and so it was the best time for us to migrate most of our data, with a end-go-live date of July the tenth. So that, that gives us enough time prior to the start of the school year to work out any kinks, we do anticipate, you know, we can plan for everything, but you know, with technology, there are bumps in the road, and we're going to do our best to be prepared for those and support the schools as needed to ensure that we have as smooth of a transition as possible. At this point, I would be happy, oh, and one, one more note I wanted to add, we also have a family access portal that is available, will be made available to our parents in the community, and that's going to go live July tenth as well. This concludes my report, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you all may have at this time.
Questions?
Thank you.
Question? You said the first migration date was going to be this Friday, correct?
That's correct.
Is it Friday after hours, or is it going to be Friday during the day?
Great question. The migration, the initial migration is going to be our scheduling data, and that's for our secondary campuses, and it will occur after school hours over the weekend.
Great, and then, just recalling from registering, my daughters, we use the Tyler Portal, right? The Tyler three sixty, so what are we going to do, I mean, does our implementation plan include a communication plan, so that we can start informing parents that they're going to have, I mean, I assume they're going to have to re-register, they're going to have to re-download apps, they're, what does that look like?
No, sir, the district has been really proactive in ensuring that we're getting as many students registered as possible prior to the migration date, and so our goal is that when we transition, the only students that would be, need to register would be new students, but we have, our, a lot of our schools have already completed one hundred percent of registration for incoming or existing students. As far as implementation or migration, we will not have a lapse in service, we will have an alternate plan in place during the week in July when the district is closed, should a parent want to register their child, so that we can have a form that, for contact information, and the campuses will reach out to those parents once the system goes live July ten, and then on July tenth, the new registration portal will be launched as well.
The parents will have to re-register, correct, for the new, and I don't mean register their students, I mean, in order to access their student information for the first time, are they going to have to download an app, are they going to have to?
Oh, yes, yes, sir. Yes, and we, we will have a communication strategy as well to roll that out. We're going to provide plenty of training to campus staff, all of our technology staff is also being trained, and so we'll have a large push to share information and ensure that, we'll work closely with the PR department as well, to ensure that information is shared out to the community.
Okay, thank you.
We don't, we don't want to launch that too soon, because we don't want to create some confusion with the current solution and the new one.
Exactly, okay. Thank you, Ms. Ramos.
Thank you.
Continuing with seven E's, Strategic Plan, Priority One, Objective Three, Ms. McCaven.
Good evening, President Nahara, Dr. Carmen, and members of the board. Tammy McCaven, Director of School Counseling, and this evening, we'll be discussing our strategic plan for twenty-twenty-three through twenty-twenty-seven, but I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Carmen to begin for us.
Thank you, Ms. McCaven. So tonight, we begin reporting to the board and to the public regarding our recent strategic plan that was created by the board in work with our administration and our community. So just kind of a recap on how we got to where we are. If, there we go, thank you. If y'all recall, who participated in this process, we worked on four main priorities. Throughout this process, we did engage stakeholders. Couple photos here of work in action in this exact, thank you, sir, in this exact boardroom. We brought in community members, we brought in students, we had board members, we had our administration, and throughout this process, here we are at work again. We ended up with belief statements for all of our stakeholders, our students, parents and families, faculty, staff, campus leaders, superintendent and central office staff, as well as our Board of Trustees. Then, as a committee, we reviewed and edited the mission statement, reviewed, and kept our existing vision statement, and identified the four priority areas with strategic objectives under each of them. The first priority was to grow and support each student with robust opportunities. The second priority under staff success and satisfaction was to recruit and value all staff to ensure satisfaction and retention. Priority three on community collaboration and engagement was to serve and market to our community through communication, collaboration, and engagement. Fourth priority, operational transparency and equity, to be transparent and efficient, to have transparent and efficient processes to ensure equitable distribution of district resources. And as our commitment to our board and our community, we are going to begin this evening with Priority One, and underneath Priority One, there are three strategic, strategic objectives to improve academic achievement for all students. Two, all students are college and/or career and/or military-ready, and tonight, Ms. McCaven will be leading the first report for strategic objective one point three, where all students will have responsible decision-making, self-awareness, and self-management skills to be well-rounded citizens. This will continue monthly to the board, you can expect one priority at a time with one strategic objective underneath that priority, monthly, we'll progress one through four, and then start back over Priority One with a different objective.
Thank you, Dr. Carmen. So we, the first one we're going to look at is, we're going to do a quick overview of SEL and mental health in our district currently. We're very fortunate that we partnered with Rethink Ed this year, this current year that we're in right now, which is our SEL curriculum, and this does cover our state mandates that the state is requiring us to teach such as human trafficking, dating violence, our trauma-informed care, our child abuse and family violence as well, plus it does cover also the mandates that we have in the district, which is suicide prevention, cyberbullying, and, and many, many more things as well. There is an app that goes along with this that we're going to talk about just in a little bit, and we're also going to look at a little bit of data from Rethink as well. Secondly, we have partnered with Capturing Kids' Hearts this year, which is our culture building program on our campuses, because we know without relationships, our students are not going to be successful. It's very important, even in our society, right, for us to have good relationships. We're working with Socorro High School, Socorro Middle School, we're working with Waco, with Sanchez, Desert Wind, with Helen Ball, and with Cybert as well. The teachers are working to build those relationships, they're working on things like having a social contract in their, in their classroom, which is what we think of kind of as norms, but the students sign off on those, so teachers have something to base on when they're talking to students about their behavior and relationships. They also are doing things like being outside in the, of the classroom when there's passing time, so that they're building those relationships and knowing students' names. Also, we're working with CareSalus this year, I have a slide on that in just a moment, so we'll go over that a little bit more, as well as working with Project Vita, we, this is our eighth year working with Project Vita. Project Vita does provide LPCs for our campuses, and we have LPCs on sixteen of our campuses, which breaks barriers for students when they need mental health services. They don't have to leave school, they don't have to miss class, except for that forty-five minutes that they're in therapy, so we're finding that many of our students are getting the help that they need, right there on campus. On one point three A, we're looking at improving faculty readiness to support our students through professional development. So we are providing ongoing professional development during PLCs, during staff development, during intercession, and we're providing professional development on things like human trafficking, suicide prevention, trauma-informed care, which all of these are mandated by the state of Texas. And the last one is our mental health in the classroom. We talk to teachers, the counselors do at the beginning of the year, about things like depression, anxiety, so that they know what the signs are, the warning signs are, and also things that they can do with our students in the classroom to help them if they're exhibiting any of those, of course, and then referring to the counselors, so we can refer out if we need to do that as well. And I mentioned CareSalus, we're very fortunate this year that we're working with CareSalus. CareSalus helps us navigate that mental health for our students. Many times in the city, because we have more students in need than we do have providers, many times students must wait one, two weeks, a month to get into therapy. CareSalus helps us, because we do a warm handoff, we, we contact parents, if parents are interested, we do a warm handoff, and then CareSalus helps provide, find those providers for the students. And currently, we have a hundred and ninety-nine students in therapy care, which is phenomenal, because we know that those students are getting the help that they need, so that they can be successful in the classroom as well. And then one point three B, this is creating a safe space for our faculty and for our students, because we know that our faculty also have to be in a safe space mentally in order to help our students. So one of the things I was talking about before was our Rethink Care App, that's part of our program, if you've heard of like Headspace, if you've heard of Calm, those apps that you have on your phone to help you to calm down, well, Rethink has that, so we can get our faculty and staff in the right state of mind as well, so that they can help our students. We also have calming corners in our counseling centers, and these are corners where students can come to the counseling suite if they are in, maybe they're having anxiety, so, and we have things like calming bears, which are weighted bears that they can hold on to, and helps them to feel safe. We have triangles where they can breathe for five minutes, hold it in, let it out, little triangles that they can do, so different kinds of things in the calming corners. And we also have calming classroom corners as well, specifically in the classrooms, for students just to focus on that mental health as well, so that students are able to learn. And then on one point three C, it's to really integrate SEL into our curriculum and classroom activities, and you can see some of the things that we're doing here. We are putting SEL topics in our newsletters, we're putting them in the morning announcements, we're trying to integrate it so that it's not just a separate thing, SEL and mental health, but it's integrated into everything that we're doing in our daily lives in the school. And we do have some, although we have great things going on on all of our campuses, we do have some SEL highlights. For instance, at Chester Jordan, they have an SEL parent night, where the parents come in, you know, we have math night, we have science night, now we have SEL night, where parents come in and they learn strategies to help their students. At Jane Hembrig, they have a student SEL night, where the students come in and they learn strategies themselves. At Socorro Middle, they were the first middle school to have a calming corner, many of our elementaries do, and it's really exciting, but the middle schools are now jumping on board and having those calming corners as well. And at Eastlake High School, they had a wellness fair focusing on mental health for their ninth graders, like they have career night, career day, they had a mental health day to bring in individuals to talk to their ninth graders, to help them out, so that they wouldn't be so stressed. But we do have areas of growth, of course, that we want to work on. We want to make it more intentional, we want to have that SEL time at the high school level. I know, talking to Mr. Denna and Ms. Parham, they said that they wanted to integrate that into their walkthrough, so they're looking for things that are happening on the campus as well, and then we want to come up with a scope and sequence for our SEL lessons. Now, on the strategic direction for three point, um, one point three, sorry, that we're looking at, we are looking at Rethink Education is our information data that we're going to be using, and here's the data right here, you can see, students are self-rating themselves on their SEL skills, and you'll notice that there's many on the side where they feel like they have low SEL skills. We want to move the other side to the right, to make sure that they feel that they have high SEL skills, so that they can be productive. In your packet, you have more data on this that you can kind of flip through and look at, to see on each one of those levels, how students are rating themselves. But that is strategic direction, I mean, strategic priority one point three, and I'll entertain any questions that you might have.
Question?
This all social, emotional learning, where does the, the anti-bullying program fit into this, if you can explain that?
Yes.
I know that's a big stressor for all grade levels.
Exactly, thank you, Mr. Castellano, for asking that. We do incorporate, incorporate lessons that our counselors do as part of the SEL program, that is one of our mandates, our required lessons that counselors must do, is on anti-bullying and cyberbullying as well, plus we have our anonymous alerts in the district, so that students and parents can both report the bullying, so that our administrators are aware of that, and so that they can help those students out, but it is part of the curriculum that we offer as part of Rethink as well.
Okay, you, you mentioned they had something to report to, I, I missed that part.
Anonymous alerts, which is our reporting system, where parents and students can report incidences of bullying, so that we're aware of those on the campuses.
Okay, thank you.
Questions?
No.
Ms. McCaven, and so every time in your presentation that we see the abbreviation SEL, that's short for social and emotional learning, correct?
Yes, sir, it is.
Thank you. Questions, thank you, Ms. McCaven.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item seven F, Transportation Hazardous Route Designation. Mr. Harmon.
Good evening, Board President Nahara, Dr. Carmen, members of the board. Well, tonight's presentation is pretty much the informational, for informational purposes, it's in regards to our hazardous routes, and what we have designated as hazardous routes according to our policy. We are to have, hold to community meetings, which here, you're looking at, we'll be having some community meetings in Colonel John Enser Middle School, and at Eastlake Middle School, along with the public notice that will be advertised, or is being advertised as we speak. So as you know, every year, hazardous routes, criteria, any routes that are going to be added or removed, we must present that information to the board. So for the first meeting, being for informational, the second board meeting to approve any changes that we may have. Something that, want to make clear, there will be no additional hazardous routes, this notice is to update the current designation of a hazardous area that was previously designated for John Enser Middle School, will now be designated to Eastlake Middle School, that's scheduled to open in July of this school year. One neighborhood currently classified as hazardous for Loma Verde Elementary and John Dugan School will be removed from the hazardous list, since the area now falls within the Ben Arbut Elementary and Eastlake Middle School boundaries. There was no changes to the hazardous route criteria that the board has or had previously adopted. This here is the hazardous route definition, and it, it just, you know, in any area that may pose a hazard or risk to the children, for example, here, that no walkways provided, an area designated as presenting a high-risk violence, or any student that must cross a freeway, an uncontrolled major traffic artery, an underpass, or a bridge, an industrial commercial area, and in other comparable condition, so at this point, there are no changes to the criteria. So what we're just presenting here is that there, the new area underneath the Eastlake High School feeder pattern. So again, an area that was previously designated to John Enser Middle School will now be designated to Eastlake Middle School as hazardous. The same routes that were in place will continue to remain in place. At the community meetings that we had for the boundary changes, parents were advised of this as well, so we had no, no feedback, no, we provided information that parents had asked at that moment, at that time. This here is just a visual of the middle school hazardous boundary. I know it's a little pulled back, but the reason that it was classified hazardous, of course, was because of the major arteries that the students have to cross. In this case, it was Paso del Este and of course, Eastlake Drive, Eastlake Drive. And the same information pertains to Enser Middle School. And just informational, along all the hazardous routes that were previously approved by the board by feeder pattern, they're all there, we did not remove any of those, and we just, I just want to point out that the areas that we are discontinuing, again, because now they belong to the Ben Arbut and Eastlake Middle School, are the airship area, and that was due to boundary changes. So because of the proximity of the neighborhood to the school, and because of the infrastructure in place, those routes are no longer needed, will not be designated as hazardous. Any questions?
No questions, thank you, Mr. Harmon. Okay, moving on to consent agenda, we do have one speaker for a consent agenda item, so I am going to pull item eight E two. Any other items to pull? Any other items to pull?
Yes, sir. Mr. Nahara, I need to pull item D4A.
A. Other items?
One item. 8I1.
Mr. Nahara, for myself, 8A1, 2, and 3.
8. Any additional items?
Motion to approve consent agenda with the exception of items 8A1, 2, and 3, item D4A, item E2, and item I1.
I apologize, one other item, 4B.
I'm in my motion to include item 4B.
Have a second?
A second.
All right, so a motion made by Ms. Nahara to approve consent agenda excluding the items she listed. A second by Ms. Macias. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes. We'll continue then with items 8A1, 2, and 3.
I would just like to abstain. I was not here, I was not present for those items.
That is the board meeting minutes for April 18th, April 26th, and May 1st of 2023. Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Nahara, seconded by Mr. Guerra. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Okay. Moving on then to item 84A. Nahara.
Thank you, Mr. Nahara. Ms. Perez, can you give us some additional information about this requested increase?
Good evening, President Nahara, members of the board, Dr. Carmen. My name is Vicky Perez, Chief Financial Officer. And so the question is information regarding the legal services increase. The original budget on this was $379,000. We have since transferred about $530,000 for a total of $820,000. We have currently spent $705,000 as from July through the end of February. The original amount that was not awarded, but given, granted up to payments of $750,000. And since we're at 705, we are not able to make that $102,000 payment that we have for March. And we do have another one coming in for April. So we do have that pending invoice as well as April and May. And I anticipate that based on the, the average of the amounts that the bills have been, it will probably be about $300,000 to sustain us through the rest of the fiscal year.
Ma'am, so the total, if approved, will be $1,050,000?
It would be an allowed amount up to $1,050,000. That doesn't necessarily mean that that's what the bills are going to be. That means that you are approving that we pay up to that amount, up through May 2023, since that's when the contract is over.
And this is my first time here, so previously, how much did we pay for legal services for the entire year?
For 2022, we paid $243,000. In the prior year before that, 2021, $166,000.
Mrs. Perez, just to understand this, the legal services here, we have to pay this amount to pay the legal services, correct? For this $250,000?
That is correct. Yes, coming to the board and asking for an increase is more of a transparency thing. This was originally paid, I'm sorry, it was originally allotted up to 750. Truth of the matter is that we've already incurred those services, so we do need to pay for that.
Will we anticipate any extra invoices?
Depending on whether or not we keep the services with Eskamiaponik, there could be a lag of several months, a couple of months. We do currently have our regular legal services of general counsel as well as any employee liability insurance representation that they do for us. And it could honestly be about another two or three months before we finally wean off, if that is what the board chooses to do.
Ms. Perez, you did say we currently have a bill for $120,000?
$120,000 for the month of March. And we are scheduled to receive April's bill any day now.
Okay, well, district has to pay its bills.
I think realistically, if I had to estimate, I would say $950,000 is a closer number. But I don't want to shortchange our ability to make those payments in a timely manner.
Question?
Yes.
Can we get a, what's the cost drivers on these, on the account? Why is it so high? Can we get that information?
There isn't a specific cost driver. I can tell you right now, sir, that for every month, there is at least 120 to 190 pages per month. So that would be a very tedious task to go in and delineate exactly which departments are requesting that service.
Well, I think it's important for us to understand what happened from one year to the next and why the costs increased and what's driving that.
Okay, so what information would you like specifically so we can prepare that for you, sir?
Yes, could you?
Excuse me, so we have a program, software program, that can capture that information that you're asking for.
Yes.
And on top of my head, I know that one of the main drivers is contracts. I reviewed, revised, or prepared up to about 125 contracts since I've been here. So that's one of the main drivers. And of course, the main driver for any district of your size is always going to be HR. And so there's, but there's various files that you aggregate to make up the HR component. But I can break it down either by file or I can break it down by area. You know, those areas are contracting, HR, governance, which includes board meetings, PIA's. You get a lot of PIA's too, so that's, that's going to drive your costs up. But I can segregate that for you and then, and put it in a way so you can understand. And then you can compare to how you were years before.
Yes, and I think that would be important, especially showing to the taxpayer why one year we were at $200,000 and it went up to this amount. And we can compare apples to apples and not say, oh, well, look, this price was here. And why is it so much more now? And that's what we need to understand to make the right decision up here and understand what's going on.
Yeah, and our invoices are very detailed. You can see who's calling us, who's sending us information, and what we're doing with that information, and which attorneys. And we have names in there of everyone that we talked to or confer with.
Sir, within that report, does, do you also track response time, quality of service?
No, it's just, it's just a matter of tracking time and documenting the work that was done. But within that, I guess you could look at dates, it has dates. So in essence, you could try to extrapolate what, you know, when the assignment was handed, when they got a response back. And you can make your own decision about whether that was effective, timely, or whatever.
Yes, sir, please.
And I think it's important, you know, the more detail you give us to understand how it went from one point to another, it would give us the information to understand what the district is going through right now.
Right. Now, I can give you your reports, now your administration already has the invoices, so you can get those invoices from them if you want, if you care to go through them. They're there.
But I understand they're not departmentalized, it's just?
No, no, that's, that's what I can provide to you as requested by trustee Castellano.
So the bills we currently have, they're just a complete list, they're not?
It's, it's listed by file. So for every matter that deserves its own file, will have its own file. And, and so right now, they're segregated by file names. So, for example, if you have an employee that has perhaps a grievance, then that's its own file. So, so you can see all the work that's been done on that file. If there's a PIA, that'll be another file.
Did you define PIA?
Oh, open records request?
Okay.
Yes, Public Information Act request.
And these are letters you send to the Attorney General?
Yes, typically.
Mr. Ramirez, part of that would also include if there was any duplication, meaning if they sent it to you, maybe two or three other attorneys, and maybe they just, they didn't need to send it to them, to those many attorneys, it could have just gone to one?
It depends on the matter. Yes, it's typical that multiple attorneys are copied. And so very likely, each attorney will have to review it to see, to ensure that they don't have to do any more on that, on that email.
Ms. Perez, I got another question. This amount isn't just for Eskamiaponik, correct? It's for all legal services that we have within the district?
No, sir, this is for this one vendor.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
Second. Motion by Ms. Nahara, second by Mr. Castellano. Discussion? Okay, so discussion, just for clarity, I believe there was a request for Mr. Ramirez or the law firm to provide a report of expenses by department or area? Okay, and then how soon can you get that to us, sir? Okay?
I'll coordinate with Mr. Ramirez, and we'll make sure that we get that to you in the next Friday packet.
Okay, sounds good. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to item 84B. Macias.
Yes, just a quick question or truly just a comment. I noticed that in the backup information, it mentioned that attendance was a concern, that some of our employees were not, were absent chronically. So my question is, are we doing anything to help that, to ensure that we're increasing? Is it, does it have to do with staffing? Does it have to do with, and it's just an open question. I'm, I'm all in agreement with the increase. I was just wondering, is there something else that we could do to ensure that our employees are feeling that they want to come to work? And that way, we're hiring employees that we need if, I don't know if the staffing guidelines is correct, and therefore, we're using contracted services versus our own employees?
Good evening, President Nahara, members of the board, Dr. Carmen. David Carrasco, Director of Operations for Team SISD. Ms. Macias, to answer your question a little more clearly, maybe if I could help, is that with custodial, what happened is early, if we backtrack to July 1st, which is the start of the fiscal year, if you remember correctly, we had, still had a lot of numbers in the, in the COVID cases. So in order for us to maintain the quality of cleanness and sanitizing, a lot of those custodians were full-time positions. We needed to bring in additional help, which caused it maybe to rise a little bit. So we're always looking in some way to make sure we're ensuring the safety and cleanness of each campus, the, really 57 sites on our district.
Perfect, so right now, we have, we don't have that concern anymore?
Not as much as we had back, maybe since from December backtracking. So July all the way to December, January, there was still some, some high numbers there. And we're having some absences. So anytime there was a position out, maybe an evening position, we had to bring, some people were working the day shift and then having to come in and help out in the night shift as well.
Thank you, sir. Yes, I just wanted clarification on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Request to approve?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Macias, seconded by Ms. Nahara. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, and the item passes. Moving on to item 8E2, and we do have a speaker, Mr. Carejo.
Originally, we were going to start off with saying congratulations to everybody. It was going to start off on a good note. Unfortunately, that was ruined, okay? I was going to say, hey, you know what, congratulations to the new board members. You worked your butts off and you're here today, okay? I'm going to tell you like I told everybody else. I am going to hold you to the same standards. You know, you could start with a clean slate. Your actions will speak louder than words, okay? And I'm going to tell you, I can be your number one ally or I can be a painting on your side, okay? I've done that before, and we all know what I'm talking about, right? So welcome. Hopefully, we won't have to have to butt heads, but I doubt it, we will, okay? Well, thank you. My next comment was going to be to the people in the new positions. I was going to say, I sure hope that you guys take them seriously and don't let them kind of get to your heads. Unfortunately, we started off with the new president right off the bat making changes. I'm pretty sure a lot of people here, well, there's people who work here, so of course, they're going to have to say, yes, yes, sir, yes, sir, I don't work here. I did not appreciate that. Now, we're not going to argue that point because, you know, legal counsel just said something real quick. I'm just going to let you know, we don't appreciate it. We don't appreciate the way you handled it. People are watching on YouTube, I'm getting all sorts of messages not liking the way you handled it. But that's okay. But for everybody else, there are certain issues. Mr. Guerra's smiling, we all know he's a secretary now. There's certain issues that we have. And I'm speaking because there's a lot of people on YouTube who don't know what the positions are. And as a secretary of the board, certain people have the authority to sign checks now, okay? There's a lot of issues that we've been having to do with transparency. And to me, I'm just calling it out right now, that I do have an issue with the new secretary who's going to be able to sign checks. We've been talking about the external audit for such a long time, and it passed. But unfortunately, now we have a new executive board, and I'm not comfortable with that. Now, I can't guarantee that they're going to do certain things bad, okay? I may be wrong, and I hope I am. But I'm one of those preventative kind of guys and not a reactive kind of guy. If I say it now, it'll lessen the chances of them doing that, but I do not foresee it, okay? So I will let you guys know that rules and regulations have to be in compliance with our local, state, and federal regulations. You guys are a board, you guys are supposed to vote on rules and regulations. You just can't make them up as you go, okay? So we will be taking a look at all the legal stuff, going to TASB, going to, to TEA, going to everything. Okay, Mr. Nahara, I know it's your first day as president. I just respectfully ask that you watch what you do, not as a threat, as in, hey, you know what? We expect people to follow rules and regulations. We respectfully ask that you do the same, okay? Now, next, legal counsel. Actually, before we go to that, mental health. Those numbers were awesome, that presentation, beautiful, right? I didn't believe one thing of it. Why? As you guys know, I am in the campuses. Mental health is huge for me. Bullying is huge for me. Those numbers looked amazing. I have spoken to six different administrators. None of them know what Carisolus is. We sit here, we've partnered up with them, and it's amazing, it's great. Yet, none of them know, even know how to use it. How are we supposed to say that we are referring people to get mental health when yet even the administrators don't know how to use it? And when they sit here, and of course, I don't blame them, they're just doing their job. But when I have three, three examples right now. And the first one is Mr. Ethan Chavez. Ethan Chavez is a 12-year-old who stood here and spoke twice. And I don't care whether you believe the mom or the dad, whatever the situation is. I spoke to the principal. They have not offered mental health assistance to him. Why? We sit here and talk about mental health and what, what great the district is doing, yet six administrators have never offered that. You also have another student, you talked about suicide prevention.
Mr. Carejo, I need, please refrain from mentioning any students of this district. If you mention one more student, your time will end there.
Legal counsel, that, that young man did speak here, that's the only reason why I'm using that name, Mr. Nahara. The next two, I will not say their names. I did not plan to, but thank you for assuring I don't. The next two students, one student, and I won't say the high school so you won't get upset. She's a cutter. She was cutting herself. Instead of getting referred to mental health assistance, I have spoken to her mother. She was sent to Keys. What is that going to do? Cutting is an outcry. Cutting says, I need help. But instead of getting her the help, they sent her to Keys, they punished her. This young lady cannot control anything in her life, her emotions or anything. The only thing she can control- The only thing she can control is her academics, and they took that away from her. And there's another young lady who was being bullied. Her mom took her out of school because the counselors would not do anything. Her father came out on the news. He sexually abused her. The kids in the school found out and bullied her. Nothing was done. She was removed from the campus.
Thank you, Mr. Carejo. Any further questions on E2? Have a motion?
Motion to approve.
I second.
A motion made by Ms. Nahara, seconded by Ms. Masias. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The item passes. Moving on then to our last item on the consent agenda, eight, or the last item pulled from the consent agenda, eight I1. Mr. Castellano.
Yes, this was an item brought forward to the agenda by Ms. Nahara.
Yes, sir. You asked the item to be pulled, so I figured you have questions.
Yes, I do. The item says it wants to change for one single board member to bring an item to an agenda and change the number to three. And I'm trying to understand the logic behind that. I didn't bring, I didn't put it on the agenda. And why they're singling us out or making it three? This item was brought by a single member to the board, and I know there's another one in the agenda that was brought by a single member. And now they want to restrict our speech, single members? That's...
Mr. Castellano, if the, if the policy is changed, it will affect all of us. I requested this policy changed because as of right now, the policy states one board member can. If the change to three board members happens, I will be held to that same change, as will everyone on this board. I felt like we had had in the past, single board members requesting items be placed on the agenda that were not part of the scope of the board's responsibility, and that it makes very dangerous when recommendations should be coming from administration, and we have board members putting items on there that don't belong there.
I've placed two items on the agenda since I've been a board member. One of them was for the forensic external audit. That was back two years ago. And then one, a couple of months back, requesting that the TEA investigation be released. And those are the two items I placed on the agenda. It's no campaign to run the district anywhere. It's my right to put this forward for a vote. We followed TASB rules and, under board officers and the law, requests from a board member. It's right here in writing. A school board may adopt a policy describing how board members request agenda items, but such a policy may not have the effect of preventing individual board member from placing an item of concern on an upcoming agenda. This is TASB. This is what we follow. I got another one here, under roles and responsibilities of individual school board members. And it states, the Attorney General has noted that the board cannot adapt a procedure that has the effect of precluding individual board members from placing an item on an agenda. Texas Attorney General Opinion Number DM0228, 1983. It's established, and I do have the Attorney General's opinion here. So we're stepping outside our lanes here to get this passed. TASB says we cannot do it. The courts, the Attorney General says we cannot do it, and it's based in court law. So this item cannot be passed.
The way I also look at it is that this is actually a form of tyranny, just for the simple fact that we were voted in by the public. So whatever the public also has questions, we are their voice. And to sit there and remove and make it three individuals, three board members to bring an agenda item, and eliminating anybody else that wants to bring a concern or bring something to the district is completely wrong. But you know what? I get it. And I actually take, I can just smile at it because, at the end of the day, you can see the intent is to suppress Mr. Castellano's and my voice. That's a simple intent right here. But, you know, obviously, when we want to be shunned out, that's one way to do it. Obviously, it's, he just quoted TASB and the Texas Attorney General and their state law on it. But it shows that we're doing, we're on the right path, Mr. Castellano, so we just got to keep doing what we're doing.
Mr. Ramirez, any input on that?
Well, before Mr. Ramirez, I, as far back as I can remember being on the board, it's always been three board members. Matter of fact, when I joined the board and was, again, recently, and was told that it was just one board member, I was kind of shocked. I mean, our committee system allows every single board member here to chair a committee. And there are three members of the board on every single one of those committees. The easy way to get something on the agenda is to bring it to the committee, because again, each one of us chairs a committee. If I want to change something on policy, I take it to Cindy. And because that's who, you know, chairs something right now. If it's something in administrative services, I own the administrative services agenda. I can add it to the agenda, and it can be discussed there, absolutely, of course, no actions. But our committee are to inform people, to inform us on the specific topics. It's there to make sure that everything is vetted correctly. If we include it on a committee agenda for discussion, for vetting, for research, then it can continue to make its way through the other committees. And at that point, if you don't have the support of three board members to put it on the agenda, then doesn't that say something to you? I don't think it's not, I don't think it's that hard. I've been subject to it since 2009, and any single time I wanted something brought to the agenda, what it did do is it made sure that we were well informed. It made sure that all angles had been considered. It made sure that the research had been done. And it built, I mean, knowledgeable board members. It also happened to build a cohesive team too, but I don't have a problem. I've worked under that requirement for a long time, and I really don't see why it should be an issue. Again, you can't get three board members to agree with you to put it on the agenda. How are you going to get a majority to approve it when we come to this meeting?
It's part of Robert's rules, is allowing the minority to speak to the public. And that's established, and you're trying to just arbitrarily change it out. Whether you knew the policy existed back when you first got on the board or not, there are other policies that we have already violated, and now we're facing TEA on that because we don't know the policy. I've just explained an Attorney General decision that goes back to 1983, and they're quoting case law back to like the 1940s. So this is established. You cannot arbitrarily say, oh, well, let's go ahead and like eliminate their rights, you know? This is not what we are. We are a government entity that is bound by the rules of law. So, like many things in the law, this is a gray area. You know, what Mr. Trustee Castellano is mentioning is true. The conservative approach that TASB has taken is that any procedure that has the net effect of prohibiting one trustee from placing matters on the agenda is inappropriate. That's one position, and TASB has adopted that position, hence why you have your current policy the way it's written now. That's probably a TASB policy that requires only one trustee to put matters on the agenda. The other, on the other hand, more liberal approach, is a more recent AG opinion from 1998. Not on point, meaning it's not, it didn't deal with the school board, it dealt with the city council, Dallas City Council, where they had a local procedure where it required five trustees or councilmen to put a matter on the agenda. Of course, that's a big, you know, I think they have fourteen, thirteen members, so. So, in that situation, though, the Attorney General said, absent any prejudice against those trustees, we think this is fine. Okay, so we have two camps here, and they're both, and they're both, both based on Attorney General opinions. Neither one is on point, meaning neither one applies directly to a school board. The case that, or the AG opinion that Trustee Castellano is referencing was, the facts were a county commissioner's court. And of course, the later one, the 98, the City Council of Dallas. So we have nothing on point for school boards. So, and we have these two extremes. I would advise that if you go the approach of going with three members, then you just have to accept the risk that you may be exposing yourself to liability from those that feel that they should, you know, the minority on the board who feels that they, their rights, expressional rights, representational rights of their constituents have been violated. And so that you just have to accept that risk.
Mr. Ramirez, these items, each board member shares three committees. So these items were brought up from Ms. Nahara and Mr. Barretta. So they went to two different committees. By them going to two different committees, it doesn't have to state that they're bringing the item to the board. In other words, if a board member requests an item on the board, like I did on a new business, if an item goes to two agendas, to two committees, it doesn't have to state who brought the item to the agenda? Which board member brought the item to the agenda?
That's an internal procedure? That's, it seems reasonable?
Is that our policy or is that board policy? Because Ms. Nahara bought this as an agenda item, but it was on policy, on consent agenda. I know Mr. Barretta bought this item also as well, and they both were on consent agenda.
Right.
Why were they on consent agendas, my question? It's because they went to two different committees.
I don't know. I don't know why it's on consent. But if you're saying that because they went through a committee, they should be on consent.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, I don't subscribe to that point of view, just because it went through a committee. I don't know what was said at committee. I don't know what the decision was made at the, if there was a consensus at the committee. I don't know if there were members on that committee who objected to these items. So whether it's on consent or on new business, that's up to the executive committee to determine.
Questions or discussion?
Just one last question. For this policy change, do we know if it ever read or when it was changed? What I heard is that it previously said or understood that there was at least three that had to take it, and then it, currently now, it's a board member. And then, of course, the revision is to add at least three. So do we have documentation of when, if it was there before, when it was removed?
I don't know that. I'm looking at the policy, and there's no date on the bottom of when it was last adopted.
I make a motion that we table this policy until next month, when we can gather more information.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion made by Ms. Nahara, second by Mr. Guerra. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Okay, moving on now to new business. Number nine A, consider approval of additional professional contract recommendations for the 2023-2024 school year. Dr. Gonzalez.
Good evening, Board President, Mr. Nahara, Board Trustees, Superintendent Nate Carmen. The administration is recommending consideration and approval of the contract recommendations for teachers, librarians, nurses, counselors, speech therapists, and education diagnostician represented.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve made by Mr. Guerra, seconded by Ms. Nahara. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Nine B, discussion and possible action on the reclassification of the clinic staff listed below per the TASB salary study. Dr. Gonzalez and Ms. Selena Stiles.
Hi, good evening, President Nahara, Dr. Carmen, members of the board. Selena Stiles, Director of Human Resources for Support Personnel. This was an item that was tabled last month, and because it is part of TASB's recommendation from the original TASB salary study, we did want to bring it back for consideration, so you all have the option to take action.
I'll move.
I second.
Sorry.
A motion made by Mr. Guerra, seconded by Ms. Masias. Any further discussion? Ms. Stiles, I just want to say, I know it was HR who arranged for the TASB person to make the presentation. It was very informative, helped me at least understand exactly why some of these positions like these took a little longer. You know, as a result of the study, helped me understand exactly what the approach of the study was, et cetera. So thank you very much for that. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and the item passes.
Thank you.
Moving on to nine C, consider approval of contract for auxiliary gymnasium improvements. Option one, package one, CSP number two, three, four, nine. Ms. Fierro.
Good evening. This item, it's, Masias Construction is presenting to you the resulting contract for this project. The bid was approved by the board on February 23, and we are presenting to you the resulting contracts for approval.
Questions? Motion to approve. Second. Motion made by Mr. Castellano. A second by Mr. Barretta. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Moving on to item D. Consider approval of contract for auxiliary gym improvements, option one, package three, CSP 2350. Ms. Fierro again.
Yes. So this bid was approved again in February 23, and Masias Construction has, per policy, CB Local is presenting to you the resulting contract.
Motion to approve. Second. Motion to approve by Mr. Barretta, seconded by Mr. Castellano. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Item E, Ms. Fierro, consider approval of contract CSP 2354, Z-Tex Construction for Montwood High School Parking Lot.
Yes, this one, this bid was approved on March 21st, and again, we are presenting to you the resulting contract for approval.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion made by Ms. Nahara, seconded by Mr. Castellano. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item E passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fierro. Item nine F, discussion and possible action for nominations to fill the vacancy for Region 19 on the Texas Association of School Board Board of Directors. That's me.
That's you? I am the interim director at this time. I was honored to be chosen as the interim director for Region 19. But come September, it is an election for the following year. I am just temporary right now. And so I would like to request the board's nomination for me to run for the permanent position.
Motion to approve, Ms. Nahara, as our permanent representative for our TASB school board.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Masias to nominate Ms. Cindy Nahara to fill the vacancy for Region 19 on the TASB Board of Directors, seconded by Ms. Nahara. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Congratulations, Mrs. Nahara.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Item nine G. Discuss and consider posting a request for qualifications for general counsel. Requester, Mr. Guerra.
Thank you, Ms. Nahada. I requested an RFQ for legal counsel. We had talked about it at the last board meeting, and we all saw that our legal fees, our legal services went up to $300,000 more. I'm not asking, I'm asking for an RFQ because that way we can go back, have our attorneys explain to us at that time RFQ, and look out for other services as well. Maybe we may get a better price. We've been with our attorneys for a year already. A price we're going to reach is close to a million dollars, $900,000 to be exact. So I think it's time we ask for an RFQ, and that's the only question for RFQ. So I call for a motion for an RFQ.
Second.
All right, motion to consider posting an RFQ for general counsel made by Mr. Guerra, seconded by Ms. Nahada. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Item passes. Okay, continuing with executive session. Consider the request to rescind the resignation of a teacher assigned to the district service center for the special education department to receive letters regarding intruder detection audit report findings for America's High School, Escondrias Early Childhood Center, Escondrias Team Academy, Keys Academy, Lujan Chavez Elementary School, Montwood Middle School, Pebble Hills High School, and SSG Manuel R. Puentes Middle School. Board self-governance members violating local policy BBI to consider administrative recommendations for assistant principal position at East Lake Middle School under Texas government code sections 551.071, 551.076, and 551.074. The time is 8:10.
We're back from executive session. The time is 8:57 and the date is May 16th. Continuing with new business, discussion and possible act 11A, discussion of possible action regarding rescinding the resignation of a teacher assigned to the district service center for the special education department. Ms. Rosie Perez, you had requested to speak to this particular item. And just a reminder, you signed up twice, so you're allowed five minutes.
Okay. So I had grouped together what I was going to be speaking about. So again, good evening, President Nahara, Superintendent Dr. Carmen, and members of the board. I am Rosie Perez and I proudly represent the members of West Texas Alliance. We would like to take this opportunity to congratulate you on your election and reelection to your seat on the board. As school board members, you are embarking on a role that is both extremely challenging and extremely rewarding. Your passion for public education is what will guide your vision, goal, and decisions. West Texas Alliance looks forward to the continued collaboration with you to lead our district to new heights of success. We know that you will always put kids first, and by supporting, collaborating, listening, and respecting the employees of SISD, you are putting kids first by providing the best individuals to create the optimum learning and growing environment for them. So never forget that what you do is important. Your success is our success, is our children's success. So we wish you good luck and Godspeed. And with that in mind, I am here also representing the member on 11A, and I have provided you all the information with that miss, that kind of mix-up in the, in her receiving her contract. And so I gave you all some brief information about her. She is a dedicated loyal employee with a skillset that I have said before that anybody who works with our special population kids, I mean, it's, it's just above and beyond the heart and soul that they put into their job. And she's been with our district for 35 years, and so I'm asking you all to, to, to please allow her to, you know, correct this and continue as an employee of our district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. Continuing with item 11A, Mr. Redlinger.
Good evening, Board President Mr. Nahara, Superintendent Dr. Carmen, and members of the board. My name is Mr. Thomas Redlinger, Human Resources Director for Employee Relations. Administration recommends consideration and approval to rescind the resignation of the employee from a district service center in the special education department as presented in closed session.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve made by Mr. Varrera, second by Mrs. Nahara. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? And the item passes. Thank you. Moving on to item 11B, consider approval of administrative recommendations for the AP at Eastlake Middle School.
Mr. President Nahara and Board Trustees, no action is required at this point in time as the interview committee selected a current assistant principal within the district, and it will just be a reassignment done administratively.
Thank you, Dr. Carmen. There being no more business before this board, we adjourn the meeting at 9:01 on May 16th.